Three desserts.
You guys can have dessert, if you bring me one.
Another one.
Another one. Two of you have already given me yours, thank you.
You're gonna love the chicken.
I can't have yours, bud?
No.
Fine.
Well, let me see, you might be able to.
Alright, well, why don't we start by going ahead and first of all welcoming our glorious members of the state legislature. Thank you very much Representative Singer and Senator Jones. I was told that Mike Foot's running a little late because he had legislative responsibilities down at the Capitol, so we will welcome him anxiously when he arrives. Why don't we go ahead and introduce ourselves? I'm sure there's a couple people here that don't know each other, but let's introduce ourselves and then we'll just turn the time over to Senator Jones and Representative Singer and we'll hear what they have to say about what's going on at our state level and then we'll talk city.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Judge Botter, the presiding judge of the city of Longmont. I'm also a past president of Colorado against the Judges Association. And most of the time judges don't get involved with decisions regarding what's going on in the legislature unless it deals with the courts. And in my case, not only what deals are going to deal with the courts, but also marijuana regulatory and also liquor license, to which I also serve as those two justices.
I'm Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. If I have to ask you for clarification on something, it's because I'm filling in for City Clerk's office taking notes.
Do you need names, are you an attorney?
I'm Richard Martin. I'm a junior post member of City Council.
We have no junior and senior members of council. You are equal. Certain members told me I was junior in the past and I didn't like that.
I'm perfectly willing to be equal.
Now that we got Matt there.
Matt Jones, I serve in the upper chamber where the seniority is common, thank you. But Representative Longmont, I'm here.
I'm Jonathan Singer and I'm in the playground of the state Capitol. It's more like a mortuary senate, but... So I serve on, I chair two committees this year. The Local Government Committee as well as the Public Health Care and Human Services Committee. And also chair several of the interim committees that deal in treatment for persons with mental illness and criminal justice system, as well as the Joint Technology Committee.
Go along with that man. For shout out to local government committee, so yeah.
Who's, 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 you want to introduce her?
This is my, this is my life coach, Gwendolyn Singer.
Way to go, Gwendolyn, welcome.
Joan Klaassen, City Council.
Holly Christian, Longmont, American Attorney, City Council. Why do you think of it as a wonder?
Bobby Finney, City Council.
Are we in here with the city manager's office? See there, Assistant City Manager in lobby is for the City Council.
Harold Mini, City Manager.
Aaron Rodriguez, the actualest junior member of City Council.
The actual youngest, anyway.
Several more equal than others. We have several members in the public and staff here, why don't we go ahead and introduce ourselves there too.
Yael Rademacher, City of Longmont, Public Works, National Resources.
Tim Waters.
Karen Roddy, Community Services.
Jody Marsh, Fire and Edible Services.
Maria Estada, City Manager's Office.
The silent creatures off to the right are members of the press. Scott Congress and John Frye with paper and...
I'm on observe.
What did I say?
Just paper.
The paper. Alright. Or the electronic paper. Alright, Senator, why don't we start with you? What's going on at the state Capitol that A, we want to know about and B, you need our help with?
A lot of energy. I know, the different minorities are procrastinating, they need climate change. And that's the capital I focus on, that environmental issue. But thank you for coming down to Senate 48 and the Protect Act, which allows local governments to do what every other land management, like with every other activity for podcast. Thank you for coming down and for taking the position of support and for coming down to testify with guts and the bill is pretty simple. It's the same bill as the bike that I read in 2016, basically, but we changed it instead of the same plan, no, we said now it says plan, no, it's all kind of projected, it changes through that. And that's how it's different from the ban. The ban says no.
The what says no?
The ban says no, this is a land you're trying to change to do what you want to do. And I'm looking forward to talking about all the talking points that the podcast does. I have it on good authority, despite all the commercials we see on TV, fractures, you not ski better or you act better.
Not better mothers?
Not better mothers. Or under the soccer balls, or upstairs, or woods, trees. You never say well, I'm excited and all that stuff. So that's the first bill I want to do, Senate 63, which is a bill that goes to financial responsibility, if what they do say they wouldn't, but let me call it the No Free Loans Act. We have a big financial problem going on in Colorado, the gas and transportation commission because of the BP, the whole rebudge we're having to do because of the court case. So there are 6.5 million negative here to sales because severance tax coming in, what they're paying. They don't think it'd be payroll to cover right now, there's some projections, I think it's more like two, almost. Plus they have about 600 orphan wells to take care of, companies are walking away, those are about 86 grand a pop to log in or mediate. They only require to put away a hundred thousand dollars for 100 wells or better. So it's a big problem. So my bill does two things, three things actually. The first is, it says you've got to set that level commiserant with every reasonable commensuality that can happen for reclamation all the way to an explosion. We've had 14 explosions since Firestone, four deaths total. I can name the names of the families if you like.
You should certainly do that in committee.
It's very sober. Like in Firestone, there's two kids without a dad or an uncle that are launched to recovery, severe burns, and the CEO got a promotion from that business. So that's the first part of the bill, saying you don't buy in this case, for well, you put this much money away. The other part of it is why extract oil gas, which is happening to South Florida. If you've looked into the finances, I suggest you do, and I'm willing to share that with you too, but I don't. This company went out, they bought a bunch of wells to do in camp, and they went out to do this, and they did bonds, and they did a stock market issue, and then they did more bonds, it was made the first bond, status. And then that wasn't still a possibility, they had to go out in the line of credit. And I told them that the top two people were, so they had 1.5 billion dollars, the top two people gave themselves 55 million in history. And they, if the Saudi family decides to pump gas like they did three years ago, they could be insolvent. So this bill says you have to COGC, look ahead in time to make sure these people have enough money to perform. They don't do that in any case, they do it in time. When they're trying to figure out any orphan wells they had, they didn't have any of that debt. So what they look at is people who are missing inspections, people who are missing requirements, and they think there could be up to 4,000 ore or orphan wells out there. So it's a big financial trade, and that's why I wrote this bill, to kind of start pushing that ball. But the oil and gas commission funds a sale of two sources of money, severance tax, the other is the environmental response fund, which is a property tax with the well at 1.7 miles, it's now 7.7 miles. Industry really fights changing that because they might have to make a lot of money because that's what they do. And this is the nicest way I can say it, they're asking for at least 24 more through a rule making, so they can just do their basic services because they're following the law. And it's not just because the severance tax, they're following the law, and that doesn't include the extra costs in the BP or the orphan wells. So they may go higher than that, and the people are like us pushing them to do that. People might as go into their monthly meetings, either the last three, or the next one, Monday it's important, you can come back and have a double header if you like, for the COGC meeting, or the Protect Act, and you have to do this.
What does that?
Same day.
Monday, that's what I was trying to suggest this morning.
And if you sign up ahead of time, you get right in now, they changed their rules a little bit, they, they don't understand the oil and gas commission in that, for a lot of ways, I don't think about it, but they, people are showing up because they're scared. They're afraid, and all the people pop in, there's men, there's old hands, that they're afraid of the venom because stealing space, you're not going to be trapped, and people in areas are afraid because if it's in an area, like set up on tour, if you'd like to, they're under assault. So people are showing up at these meetings, instead of saying, okay, pray, we're going to work through this three minutes, just power through it, of course they've been doing it, to their credit. They said, you have to cite a docket number you're speaking to, you have to sign up ahead of time if you can, and explain what you're going to talk about, and if it goes over two hours, you will have to wait until the end of the meeting, which could be the next day. Does anyone do meetings? And so it's like hitting, right? Right? And they're not going to save any more time, but they're making it harder on people, affirm it, that they don't really want to hear what we have to say. So I would suggest working on that, actually. Extraction spacing orders put off from this month to March, I would definitely go to that. That is superseded, a bit, ours has got some good reporting, so we know what's going on around the state, the general public, I heard about it, but I'm going to all these monthly meetings. And they started asking me, they did that, was it the pipeline hearing not long ago? Melis Jones and I were there, they called, they called us, they said we had to cite the rule we're referring to, and testifying, considering, I know the series of rules, I don't know which one. And thank God, at least one first, it just happened to me. And that's what I did, but if they ask, who do I get to talking to? I'm going to talk to everyone who has to do extraction, everyone has to do, because there will be things up there, spacing orders, grilling permits, something. And it's just, it's a government agency that doesn't know how to listen to the public, perhaps even make things work.
They know.
How they know?
Oh, they know. They just don't, you know, they know, they just don't care.
Senator Jones, we are taking, this position for 63 is on the council agenda for Tuesday, for them to take a position on, so council members choose to support Senate 63, which is the second one he was talking about. That would give you enough time to be able to testify on Thursday.
And Mike will talk about some other real strong issues here, but I'll be doing this second thing. The other thing, since I'm working on the site of energy, the fuel system gives off gases, 26, we're exploding, I'm working on the fuel energy side, you guys are an inspiration to me, I'm doing this quality, I'm going to do it 100% by 2035. And there is a national movement called OFF, you've heard of it, OFF fossil fuels, and that bill of commerce, this is by 2035, there is, there are number states, there probably is, and I'm just part of that group, and it's because it's possible to do. The costs, the bill's called the cheaper, cleaner power, because these are cheaper and they're cleaner, and they're safer, and they're cleaner. You guys have not been there.
What's my thing?
But...
Safer, good word.
So Xcel Energy told us in 2004, when there was a validation, they could do 10%. They just asked the BUC not long ago to open up a docket, they started to, the possibility that they could do 55% by 2026. They told me a year ago they could do 50, 40. It's just magic, they want to do it.
It's magic, it just happens.
But that's only 13 years, they've gone from zero to the proposal to go to 55. And what's happening is the cost is just going to the floor, if you have more vision. Xcel's most recent proposals came in, you can do gas now for about six cents a plant cycle, gas supply, that's the most efficient gas supply. And wind came in at 1.7 cents, this is a real bit, this is a real bit, and that's a medium price. It's a medium price, so they'll probably take it to cheaper prices, right? It's probably less than, the thing that really blew you away, and in solar, it's less than true, large scale solar, the thing that blew you away, though, is that you can do wind and battery storage for 2.7, these are real bits, 2.7. What's that mean for more expensive fuels like gas and coal and nuclear? It's a new day, we're in a revolution, electrification cars is coming out, it's like a freight train, Volvo's no longer in internal combustion, and so GM's coming out with 22 electric vehicles by 2020. Ford's doing something similar, and Tesla's doing autonomous vehicles, because the cost of wind is always dropping, the cost of battery storage is always dropping. You buy a Nissan Leaf today, a new one, they go 150 miles, four years ago they only made it. That's the change that's happening. It's like, it's like horse bug into the auto, or bones being out of pockets, going out there. But there's a guy at Stanford, I saw for this, that does adoption curves, he's an economist, and he goes around and talks about how quick things get adopted, economies of scale, like mainstream, like our phones. Took 15 years for a horse bug to an auto, our cell phones took us, what, 10? And he thinks it's quick, he says, do not buy new internal combustion engine cars, the price will not be very good for yourself. I don't know if it's that fast, Bill Ritter puts, puts in half vehicles by 2025, I think it is, but it's, it's changing, it's not a published fact, I have a little more of that. I was out at the National Congress of State Legislatures this year, the National Congress, talking about people who do this stuff. And two years ago, there was a lot of complaint about the power. This time it was which state can take advantage of this change, of course. We're going to outcompete you, basically.
We're going to what?
Outcompete you. And you know, in California, that's a carbon market, Oregon has one, B.C. has one, Washington will probably have it within two years, what's that, probably the six biggest country in the world? So this stuff is happening fast, and we, with our Colorado brand, should be taking full advantage of it, you need to know first, any messages over there.
Representative Singer, what does Gwendolyn have to say?
Well, actually, we were just looking at a book called Just One More. So, little mas in Spanish, we try to cover as many languages as we can, and it's probably a good summary for how I run my legislative bills, because I seem to carry Just One More. I was thinking that, while it's interesting to talk about how things start off, I wonder if we should meet at the end of session to talk about where we actually ended up. So last year I ran about 30 bills and resolutions, I passed 20, and I was talking to the Chamber of Commerce not too long ago, and they said, you know, you shouldn't be just proud of how many bills you run, we don't need more laws, more regulations, and you know, I explained to some of them that to repeal a bad law or a bad regulation, you have to pass a new law. And you know, some of their heads explode, but it reminds me of, actually, last year, I came here and I said, you know, one of the regulations I wanted to get rid of was a pretty simple concept. So basically, before this year, if you were the owner of a liquor establishment, say a restaurant, maybe the pump house, I don't know, and you wanted to purchase alcohol wholesale for your restaurant, your bar, the only person who could do it was you, the owner. So not your bar manager, not your kitchen manager, not your floor manager. So we passed a law that said if you want to designate a responsible adult over the age of 21 to purchase your liquor for you, go for it. And so I tried to do my best to find these points of commonality, these points of similarity that work to everyone's benefit. And so along those lines, I worked through the interim this summer on those interim committees that we talked about, actually, one of them, the mental illness and the criminal justice system, but the second one that we worked, I worked on was the opioid task force. And so we had a bipartisan task force that looked at this issue from top to bottom, and there's no denying now that we are in the midst of an epidemic. And so I'm really proud of the work that that bipartisan committee did. It was evenly split among Democrats and Republicans, and we came out with a package of six bills, which I will sneak preview tomorrow at 7:30 in the morning at, over at the Boulder County Longmont Annex. So anyone who wants to wake up a little early and talk opiates, it's all I talk about now. The good news is, is those were all bipartisan issues. The bad news is, this is an election year, and so even bipartisan issues may fall on partisan death vials. So among those six bills, we're working on increasing access to treatment, making sure that people on Medicaid have access to inpatient treatment, focusing on medication assisted therapy, which has been shown to be the most effective form of treatment. And then we're doing some things that are a little outside of the box, that are maybe going to make some enemies, and hopefully we can find a way forward. One of them is putting new expectations on our health insurance industry, and one, just people are running thankful. Right now, if any of us had a back injury, or surgery, or something serious that was causing pain, we wanted to go see if the little therapist were probably paying a specialist fee, not looking to see a good generalist practitioner. And so while it might cost me 15 or 20 dollars to go see my family physician, it might cost me 50 dollars to see my PT. So what does that mean? It means that a lot of people who have the option, so-called option of seeing a PT, actually see them once or twice when they need to see them six or a dozen times because they can't afford anything else. But you can always fall back on opiates, right? You can always get a prescription for those, and that is going to be cheaper in the short run. So I'm going to be working on that bill to see what kind of, what kind of compromises we can make to make sure that we don't have an industry standing in the way of good policy when we're in the midst of a crisis. The other one that is drawing a little bit of controversy right now is a bill that would allow for a pilot program for a supervised use facility, right now in the city and county of Denver, just one in the entire state. But this is based off of a model that has worked in 66 countries. We just had a group of lawmakers visit one in Vancouver, Canada, but what this is, is for people who are addicted to opiates to be able to access a facility where they could use the substance they were addicted to while being supervised by professionals that would recognize the signs of overdose, so they could immediately reverse that overdose so they don't die, and make sure that those needles don't end up on our sidewalks, in our parks. And ultimately, what we're hearing from are the restaurant tourism industry, who are saying, we are tired of people dying in our bathrooms. That's what's happening, at least in Denver, whether it's, you know, a convenience store or a restaurant, it has gotten that serious. So I know there's a lot of people out there that are saying, well, we don't want to encourage the same behavior that got them in trouble, got people in trouble in the first place. And this is what I tell people, one is, we have evidence to show this works. Out in Vancouver, over, well over half, almost 60% of the people who have attended a supervised use facility are actually, is actually in some form of treatment now. There have been no documented deaths of a single person that has accessed one of these supervised use facilities, use facilities. So we know that they work, they aren't perfect. And we also know, or at least I know, having worked with these folks, having counseled people with addictions, there are people who are addicted to certain substances because it feels good with opiates, and might have started out that way, but more often than not, they are trying to avoid the feelings you get with withdrawal. They're more afraid of withdrawal than death. And so this is an opportunity to see if this is something that works. Unfortunately, the Senate has assigned this to the State Affairs Committee, even though it was a bipartisan bill, got a unanimous vote out of the opioid interim committee this summer, and so we're going to have an uphill battle to even start a single pilot program in our state. There's a couple other good things that bill does, I'll just want to mention one more, and that is that we actually know that unfortunately our teens and youth are also starting to fall into the trap of addiction. You get a sports injury, you give an opiate, and that's how it starts. And it starts with prescription drugs and then moves to illegal drugs, because illegal, heroin, is cheaper than the oxycontin or Percocet that you can get at the pharmacy. So where does this leave our schools? Well, our schools should be able to access opiate reversal drugs like naloxone without fear of civil lawsuits. Naloxone is an opiate reversal agent that stops the overdose, but itself, by itself, is not intoxicating and can be administered to any one of us right now, and it wouldn't be fun, but it also wouldn't be toxic. So the worst that would happen is if you actually did have a legitimate injury or legitimate prescription for opiates, you might find yourself in a position where that opiate might not be working to relieve your pain for a little while. So when you have that level of a downside, to at least open the doors so our schools aren't afraid to have this on their campuses, just like we do with EpiPax now for antihalamicic shock, just like we do for EpiPax for antihalamicic shock in restaurants, actually. We want to make sure that we're doing the right thing so we can save people's lives, and I sincerely hope that that bill gets a fair hearing. I sincerely hope that we have an opportunity to do something that sounds a little outside the box, because all options can be on the table right now, and we're all feeling in some way. Everyone here probably has either experienced this themselves or knows somebody who has experienced it, if not knows someone who has unfortunately passed away due to their addiction. So I couldn't be more emphatic about that. I am excited that I think some of those bills will actually have a much easier path forward. We have a bill that's creating an opportunity for tuition payback for people who decide to become addiction counselors and work especially in our underserved areas. Whether those underserved areas are urban, suburban, rural, I can name all of them for you right now, but we all know college debt is crushing and expensive, and we also are all pretty aware that addiction counselors don't exactly make six-figure sums most of the time. They're folks oftentimes starting at 13, 14, or even less in our, so apart from the opiate bills that I'll be working on, moving from one drug to another, since we mentioned marijuana as a bill, I'm also working on a bill that will allow for local control over a tasting room model. So just like we have distilleries and breweries for alcohol, and someone who's a brewer can allow for a sampling room, we don't have the same thing for marijuana. And so the problem that we're getting now is we have tourists who are coming to our state, purchasing legal marijuana out of dispensary, which is where you should be buying it if you're going to buy it. And then they're told, well, you can't smoke it here, you can't eat it here, you can't imbibe it here, oh, but don't do it in the hotel, because you'll get kicked out, oh, don't do it on the sidewalk, public consumption is illegal, don't do it in a park, oh, definitely don't do it on the bus. And by the way, whatever you bought, please finish it by the time you got to the airport because you can't have it there either. So where does that leave us? It leaves us in a situation where we are unfortunately having customers using it the wrong place at the wrong time. So this would allow for the creation of a tasting room model at existing dispensaries if the local government, if the city or the county chose to allow it. So that is a bipartisan bill, we'll likely be starting that in the House, but I actually have some pretty, oh gosh, it was a pun, I have some pretty high hopes for it, so it all fit you too, huh? So, yeah, I do have some high hopes for it actually this year, and I am hopeful for getting something reasonable done, so we can make sure these folks are tips trained, just like you would do entering a winery, distillery, or bar. And we'll see where it goes. On top of that, you know, I'll be supporting the oil and gas safety bills, I'm looking at doing a couple of my own, I don't know if you know, but Mike Foot and Senator Matt Jones almost got kicked out of... of a public meeting, because apparently you can't be a lawmaker, you're considered a member of the public, and we couldn't figure it out ourselves. And so, you know what, you know, I used to sit on the planning and zoning commission. If there was a change to the comprehensive plan, or a new site plan, or whatever it was, you had public notice and a public meeting, and anyone could show up. And so why can't we try and repeat that process for a dangerous, heavy industrial process? So I'll be looking at that to see if we can really just mimic what we're doing for every other activity in the state, which I think is a pretty reasonable thing. I'll also be working on mental health and making sure folks leaving our criminal justice system are, I won't even say receiving a second chance, because a lot of them didn't even get a first chance. But we know that people leaving the criminal justice system don't always have the best options when they're leaving. Best options are jobs, terms of housing, in terms of access to the services that they need, so they don't end up back in jail or back in prison. And so I've got a pretty simple concept right now. It's based off of a plan that started to work, but for people leaving the criminal justice system with either serious substance use disorder or serious mental illness, it would provide an option to provide subsidized housing with supportive services. So whether it's family counseling, domestic violence counseling, job counseling, whatever it is that that person needs to get back on their feet, they're going to have a roof over their head so they can focus on what they need to deal. And a lot of people say, "Great, well, where's the money coming from?" Right? You know, you don't have unlimited, you know, scabs of money. So, and we pass balanced budgets every year. So where this money is coming from is actually our own division of criminal justice. They don't always spend all their money every year, which is a good thing. And so instead of allowing that money just to go back to our general fund, where it might be spent on anything, why not provide at least a pocket of that money to go back to housing? And so this year, we'll have somewhere between two and four million dollars from that specific pocket of money. So we're not feeding a criminal justice system where we're warehousing people with two and thirty thousand dollars a year, and then returning those folks to the very system that we're trying to get them out of. So that's just the tip of the iceberg. But I look forward to hearing some feedback from all of you about what your priorities are.
This isn't a council priority, but what are you going to do about the now federal tax plan? And January, first of next year, alimony, the maintenance, the divorcing couples is no longer deductible. And so you've got a state formula. Basically, you take forty percent of the higher wage earner, to us fifty percent of the lower wage earner, and that's not a big deal, because they're paying off the net, you know? But, I'm sorry, you're paying off the gross.
Right.
So you pay that first, then you pay taxes. But if you pay taxes, you're going to have a lot of people, husbands, wives, fathers, mothers, who are going to be broke. I don't know if anybody's addressed that yet, but everybody, at least in my profession, is talking about it. And I haven't heard anything. You've only got about three hundred and forty days left before...
I'd say we only have about a hundred days left in our legislative session, so what I will say, actually, it's the first time I've heard this, I hadn't thought of that, but I do work with a group of folks. There's a support committee that I sit on, and we actually have, you know, judges, magistrates, human service folks, folks who do financial recovery efforts, non-distodial parents and custodial parents that all sit on this. So it's a really good group of people that are well, they know the outcomes better than I can, I'll just put it that way. I'm going to ask that question.
Because I've been at a couple of continuing legal education classes this month.
Yeah.
And everybody's saying, "Ah, we don't need to worry about it, because January, the legislature's going to fix it." I'm like, "These guys? Better bring it up."
Yeah. Or we can have, you know, we can have Washington, wait for Washington DC to do something, but...
Yeah, yeah, do that.
If between then and now, if between then and now, I will get back to you. That's an interesting thing, and I do work with a group of people. I see them once a month down at the Capitol, and I can reach out to them at any time and see if maybe we can...
You need to fix the calculation, or there's going to be problems.
You got it. We'll look at it.
Well, let's go ahead and dismiss. I'm kidding. What other issues do other people have? City council members?
Yeah, I don't, I, the big Longmont issue that nobody has mentioned yet is affordable housing, and neither of you mentioned anything on that. I have a concern about the tax bill. I have no idea, I've been searching for data about this. But when you give a blanket fourteen percent tax cut to banks, what does that do to the market for life tech? Is there going to be a shortage? Are we going to be, are you trying to hard, developers of affordable housing going to not be able to sell their life tech? Or collateral?
That's something I could follow up on. I'll say life tech is incredibly popular, like really popular at the Capitol. Once again, one of those really bipartisan things. I haven't heard any whingeing from the construction industry, the housing industry, or the banks about this, and I figured they would, because they actually love this tax credit. Only it worked, too. It's actually effective, so I don't mean that majoritively at all. Oh, you know, I haven't thought about that. So the other thing we're doing on affordable housing is we hopefully will continue the investment we had from last year from the marijuana tax cash fund. Our marijuana taxes paid for about fifteen point three million dollars to be provided in terms of local grants to communities to develop, purchase, create affordable housing. That those dollars are finally getting out the door. And so fifteen point three million dollars sounds like a big number, and it would be if it was going to just one person. But as we all know, construction is not cheap. And so it's a start, and it's actually the first time that the state has really tried to take a big bite out of the affordable housing crisis and put some real dollars into it. So my hope is that trend continues now that we had about a hundred million dollars in marijuana tax cash fund dollars. Last year, it's grown to over two hundred million dollars this year. Maybe instead of fifteen point three million, it turns into thirty. But that's probably a little too optimistic.
I don't think we have any staff presentations or comments on bills, but...
Y'all covered the bills that councilors have taken a position on, or is upon the agenda?
Yeah, transportation's on the agenda, and it seems to be at the forefront, at every meeting I've attended, outside the city region. What's your take on what's going on with the nine billion dollar shortfall? The legislature get it done? Will we get to rely on the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce and hope they get it done? What's the feel? Senator Jones, you shared a little bit when you were mayor of Commissioners Committee down at the Capitol, a little bit. Give us an update.
So last year, there was the referendum in the Senate Finance Committee. That's not going to change, so I don't think there's anything like that out of the state house, which we do, which we are saying is, sort of, one, which is a bonding bill that takes money out of current revenue stream, which means that they'll take from other departments, including schools, school funding. So that's not very popular, probably, I guess, in the House. So then that leads us with the chamber, and what they put on the ballot, and Joe, and the other people. Head of the chamber, Rob, about how unhappy people are in Boulder County, feeling they've been used, and that if they want to pass something, they better make it worthwhile up here. And I had this moment with Mike at the Lewisville Town Hall last year.
And of course, we want to milk, uh, well, representative Mike Foot, I mean, I got your message, absolutely, we'll talk later.
We had the town hall, and I asked him about this referendum that was on about last year, since the town took place before last year's session. And I said, "How many of you are here in my shoes who voted for that referendum?" "Not a single hand." There were sixty people in the room. And he's like, "Ooh." I said, "What if you go for a..." Two-thirds of hands go up, and a woman in a red robe yells, "They said that last time." And that's the finish. So I tell that story over and over again. I've told it to the heads of construction, guys that builds the roads, who are pushing all this stuff, and make their point. And this is what I worked many years ago when I helped pass the last state gas tax, that people in some counties are not going to vote for taxes. And you can sweeten it all you want, you're still going to say, "No." I said, "If you want to increase your margin, do a little change." And it's really funny, when you tell them, and they're like, "What?" And I go, "There goes the new six, and we got a shortage of stick there." And people are still mad about it. You know, by the way, we love the four columns, that third toll lane, it's getting twice as much per mile as it was thirty-six. I mean, we really get a shortage of stick, so lighting is, or we talked before about car on this, so it's Boulder County about, right, vote more money than, you sold, but to me, the money for nineteen or seven, which we all needed, isn't the same as saying, like, "What's real?" When you're talking about something, something. "Oh, there's more money in there?" "Yeah, right." All the everybody's right sitting there. And then they'll say, "Well, you already paid for that once," but the answer to that is, "Well, you might even just get it now." So that's kind of the frame. We got that bill last year, like, the legislators in the districts, and when we did. And in my senate district, there were two projects, about five, ten bucks. It was the bus train barn up here, I should call it that, here's rather, their new station. And then one nineteen, planned money, and I guess there was some money for seven, too, but it was like twenty bucks. It's a total of fifteen million bucks. So I had two projects, Steve Fenberg in Boulder area had two projects. An average senator had five or six. So both of us had two. Randy Muddburner, who was carrying the bill, I must look at thirty-seven. And so I'm trying to push and say, "What's wrong with this stuff?"
Did you say thirty-something?
Yeah.
Three zero.
It was thirty-four, something like that. He carried on, went over there, got twenty-something, too, in a rural road, and I talked to George Bruce of the county, and he said, "Well, they have interstate highways, so they're far, but it's like..." Big deal, it's Rideshare, right? Northwest rail, Rideshare, Westminster's. But a little, no, but it's twice what they're projecting, it's the only four dogs really doing a lot better than they're projecting to. So long story short, we got to find more money for us, we need to show you this day. I don't totally understand it, but see, that's being more responsive. They increased that amount of money, and you guys probably were part of those conversations, I would hope. But if they're going to sell something in Boulder County, who's going to stick their neck out, it better be good.
Why is it that we are not really, you know, a lot of people in the seventies were talking about statewide public transportation, most of public transportation. So we would have fast rail from east-west, north-south, one line, this, and then everybody locally could develop off those lines. We had the money then, and we had the political will. We have nothing. It's all, everybody fighting each other against, you know, to try to get their own share. And yet, when we talk about this allegedly monolory progress, or process, we're actually just talking about widening roads, which just makes public transportation less likely, because you widen the roads, then it's a little easier for a little while to get in your car to another place. But it doesn't work in the long run, it just leads to more traffic. If we stop trying to widen roads and start actually concentrating on how everybody throughout the state could get better train services and better public transportation. I mean, we have such a peaceful thing. Four columns are so frustrated that they created their own. But they can, they come to Boulder, I mean, to Longmont, and then we can't actually get on except to go to Boulder. It's a, it's a very, and it's all so peaceful. If we just address this on a statewide basis of how we can actually have public transportation in this one, actually lessen the whole gridlock that we experienced. Going to Denver used to be, you know, half an hour, and a half an hour sometimes, three hours. We, there just seems to be no public way or political will to do re-planning on a statewide basis, because people keep saying, "No taxes." And yet, we're not getting any of the gas taxes states have after all these years. We have no finance. And I know this isn't something we can, it's a matter of public will, too. People simply have decided that they don't want to pay taxes, but, I'm sorry, I don't have anything to speak about public taxes, that is how we finance any public will.
And so last year, there was a bill passed to charge commission to look at the freight service for columns to front off. And they're working on it, they're hopeful, and they should come back with a design or plan for us. And of course, they came back and said, "Well, it looks good, but we need more time." So that's going on, this is what is a hyperlinked thing that's going on, potentially.
But it misses Longmont, doesn't it?
Actually, the last map I saw at Longmont.
Well, that's a good change.
With Joe and I were at that legislative breakfast. And yeah, I did actually cut in from, it would be east of I-25, through Longmont, was one of the extensions. So they showed us the map at the breakfast.
Again, it's probably going to have to be a tax to get funding for it, and again, people in Boulder County and any other funding corridors are going to say, "Again, we're going to try this again and get kicked." So I don't really hope for any of those things until RTD through FastTrax completes their rail, I don't think the public will put any trust in this new initiative. So my question to you, a man, is, are there any funds on the federal level that we got for transportation that you know about?
Well, what's interesting is, you know, there's always this conversation with BAN asking, "Why should we get this much out?" I've got a color on Sprague, it's a transportation area, oh my God. I was on transportation, everybody down there with Raleigh Heath once, and I was warned, but they are adamant about that stuff. But the reason that doesn't happen federal level is because a lot more money in. Not a joke. And it makes me quite nervous, given what's going on in DC, if that will persist. So I don't think we can look to the federal government, I mean, but I hope we get the rights of that, right? At least that is the kind of scale, I think, I'm no insider on that.
Okay. What about if the chamber, when the chamber issue fails, because I don't think it's going to pass the way we're doing it. Are there any plans at all from the state to kind of to, any bills?
Go to the ballot.
Yeah.
Let that work.
I guess we'll have to wait until there are no more combustible engines on the road.
Construction industry's been like a long time. I've been a part shop on this thing for a long time, so I wouldn't be surprised if there's something else after that.
Who's, which industry?
Construction, the people who built roads.
Well, and keep in mind, the lack of combustible engines will only enhance the lack of gas taxes.
Exactly, that's what I mean.
Let's be careful here, let's be careful. Electric vehicles do pay for the system miserably, the weight and miles are. I carried the car through that a few years ago, and it's not much, thirty bucks a year and twenty bucks into the charging station. That was set by people from the C and D business, propane business, electric business, and vehicle business, and that's what they thought the cost was. Now, there was talk about that going out, but there is a fee in place, and then you pay, and they go off.
Fifty bucks a year?
Yeah, but it's only thirty to HUT. But it also put twenty bucks in the charging station. I don't know if you saw the company that built out of the charging stations, it's pretty impressive.
Something worth mentioning that I didn't really think about until this morning, we have this group that, we had a meeting this morning, I don't remember the name of the group, but they're basically locally owned small business representatives who, we had a meeting to discuss their concerns. One of their comments kind of struck me, right now, our sales tax is like eight point five one percent. If the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce successfully does pass a transportation tax, we're now at nine point five one percent. And as that continues to creep by, you know, we're higher than our neighbors, which could be detrimental to people who choose to shop here, which could be problematic. So this is something to keep in mind, if you guys are, you know, raising taxes.
It's the Chamber of Commerce who raises taxes, so we can't do that.
No, but you talk to them more than we do. No, no, but you talk to them more than we do, so.
Yeah, I'm not their, on their team.
They don't generally consult with us.
Thirty six, I'm just thirty six. I got a fee, but they'll be, that's good.
Representative Foot, uh, before you came in, we gave the senator and representative an opportunity to show what bills they'd been working on, what issues they think are important to them and us, and how it pertains to us, and what we need to know, and how we can help.
Great. Well, um, I apologize for being late. Um, I was in the State Affairs Committee, as happens every Wednesday. And, um, so, we had quite a few people come in to testify and get a fair hearing, and then we voted no on the bill, um, as we always do. So, uh, apologize for that, but, um, so, I don't know if you guys were talking since I came in halfway, or, yeah, late, at the very least. I don't know if anyone mentioned that there is discussions about doing some general fund money for transportation this year. Um, but when you have a nine billion dollar hole, it's, it's, uh, it's not like it's gonna solve the problem. But what we're looking at this year is actually higher revenue than anticipated because of the, the tax bill. And DC is actually raising taxes on a fair number of Coloradans. And so, we're actually looking at more revenue than expected, I think. The number was something like three to four hundred million that we're looking at. So, now, of course, usually the issue is, how are we gonna rube Goldberg the budget so that we don't cut from schools as much as we typically do? Now, since it doesn't look like we're gonna have to do that exactly, the race is on for who's gonna claim that extra money. And so, transportation, of course, is high of this, but then we still have our eight hundred and fifty billion dollar negative factor to K twelve, and a number of other unmet needs. So, there's, there's, of course, lots of discussions about where that would go. But the bottom line is, I think there'll be some additional money coming out of general fund this year to go toward transportation, because we and everybody hears about how we need it. And so, there will be that. The, uh, Minority Leader's speech on the House floor, the, the first day of session, basically laid out, um, his view, which is that all the extra money should go to transportation, and it all should go to build roads, no bike paths, no nothing. No, no alternative transportation, no bike paths, just roads. So, that's kind of where they're starting off. I think that the view of our caucus has been, well, we should increase funding for transportation, but we also need to be looking at K twelve education in particular, and trying to buy down a little bit more of that negative factor. So, I think those are gonna be the types of discussions that we'll be having all the way up through the budget this year. So, we're in a, a better place this year than typically. Ironically, because of this extra money coming in from the tax bill, we're on pace to hit the taper cap a lot sooner than we expected, which means then we're looking at refunds. And so, we have the most messed up budgeting system, I think, that you could ever create in this state, but it is what it is. So, we will see that, um, and some, and recognition of transportation is important, but not the only thing that we should be focused on. So, I'll switch gears a little bit and talk about one bill in particular that I'm working on that I'm, I'm pretty excited about. It's, it's a, it's a very, uh, big picture type of healthcare price transparency bill. And the basic premise of the bill is, across the board, price transparency on healthcare. Imagine this, before you actually get the service. So, just like everything else, you should be able to know the price of what you're getting into beforehand, if you want to, instead of getting stuck with a one thousand dollar bill for a box of Kleenexes at a hospital afterwards, et cetera, et cetera. And so, this has been a very interesting bill for me for a lot of reasons. First of all, that, because I don't serve on health committees, I really have, this hasn't really been one of my areas of emphasis. But, uh, I had a constituent from here in Longmont and a group of people together that have worked on this health, uh, healthcare issues for, for many years, just with their employment and otherwise. And we started talking early last summer about this, and I said, well, let's, let's, let's turn it into a bill and see what happens. So, we've gone through many steps, and it's gone through many drafts, and, and, um, there's a lot of questions and a lot of details and a lot of things to work out, but I'm excited about pushing it forward because it needs to be done. The full, you're not really gonna have a functional healthcare market without price transparency like anything. I mean, imagine going to the grocery store, and you wanna buy twelve things, but they won't tell you how much it's gonna cost until you actually check them out.
Until you eat it.
Until you eat it, right? Then it's too late, right? So, that's exactly what, what we have in healthcare, and it, it leads to this completely dysfunctional market that is, that has contributed at least to the continued cost increases way above the level of inflation. And this affects everybody. We were just talking with the school district, um, over the weekend, and of course, they focus on this. I'm sure the city focuses on this. I mean, anyone that employs anybody focuses on this. And so, it's, it's very wide-ranging and a very exciting concept. And it has a cross-aisle appeal. Um, it has appeal to, as far as I can tell, almost all the constituents I've talked to about it. Uh, doesn't necessarily have appeal to some of the special interest groups down there, so we'll just see how that works out. But, um, it, it, it's, it's a good concept, it's, it's an interesting concept, and I think it also represents exactly what we're supposed to be doing at the legislature, which is having constituents come to us and putting, starting to put the bills through the process and, and putting it out there in the marketplace of ideas and see where it goes, which is why I'm happy to do it. And, um, I'll freely admit that I'm not a healthcare expert, although I'm kind of taking a crash course on some of the different aspects of it, and I've learned a lot. But, um, and this bill has certainly helped me do that. And I, I think we're pretty close to actually getting bipartisan co-prime sponsors in the House and the Senate at this point. So, I mean, that's not a guarantee of success, of course, but it's certainly, um, something that can very much help. And, I mean, frankly, when I go over to the, to the Senate and talk to Republicans over there that aren't typically, we don't typically see eye to eye on things, we are completely on the same level on something like this. So, that's, that's probably the, the, uh, the most, I, I, for me, the most stimulating, most exciting bill that I'm working on this session. Thank you, by the way, for your support on the oil and gas issue. And I just saw that the other day, and of course, I'll be doing oil and gas stuff like I always do, but I wanted to highlight this one, 'cause it's a little bit outside of the normal wheelhouse.
You go back to your healthcare bill, is that, you'd be like, how would it work? Is it like McDonald's burger? Where you show up, like, I want that burger, I want that fry, I want, or?
Yeah, the way that, the way that we're envisioning it now is that the information is just out there. So, the information has to be made, it has to be published in some way. We wanna make sure it's not too hard for us to publish information. And of course, there's different providers, hospitals, insurance companies, everybody else has some different things that they do. But it, the way that it's envisioned now is the information is out there, like it is actually with some types of healthcare right now. There's been some bills where there's been limited transparency on limited number of things. So, it's out there through the civic program example, for example, at the state. Um, and in some, some kind of healthcare that you get, it's already out there. I mean, if you wanna shop for Lasik, for example, which I did about twelve or thirteen years ago, it's out there, and you can compare and contrast. And, um, so, the point is to put the information out there, and then, um, I, I say this with a high level of confidence, that when the information is out there, there's gonna be people that are gonna take advantage of that and create some kind of a system where it's gonna be user-friendly, and you can go through it, you can figure it all out on your phone or whatever means you wanna do. But that's just, what I want to emphasize, though, is that that is, that would be a very big benefit for consumers. Not everyone's gonna take advantage of that, they're free to take advantage of it or not. Of course, it doesn't account for quality and, and who you're comfortable with or anything like that, it's just straight price, so.
Or your insurance.
Or your insurance will cover. It doesn't account for any of that stuff. So, it's valuable to the extent that you wanna use it, but you don't have to use it. But I think where it really becomes valuable is, it really takes what we have now, which is a completely dysfunctional market, and turns it into something that's more rational. And so, if you do have a hospital discharging a thousand bucks for a Kleenex box, then that's gonna be exposed, and people are gonna see that before the fact. So, just like any kind of outlier, um, in any kind of market, I think you'll start to see that those irregularities come down in order to be competitive. And so, um, that's really the, the main benefit. And if you have a functional market, I think other things follow. Of course, the consumer benefit is, is what we're looking at as well, but I think, and the concept is, that you'll see prices that will at least not increase nearly as fast as they have been because of that.
Thank you. Well, we've been here an hour and a half. Got any other council comments, questions, before we go to public invited to be heard?
Yeah, um, I would like to hear any of you choose to comment on, on the, on the home rule regulation of oil and gas builders coming up on Monday. What do you see as the main talking points?
The main talking points in support of it?
In support, yeah. We're not gonna oppose it.
Yeah, obviously, yeah. And, uh, yeah. Well, um, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to synthesize this into a great talking point, but really, the premise of it is, is that local governments should be able to, uh, say no. They should be able to regulate oil and gas, or say no to oil and gas like they do with everything else. I mean, there's no other industry that can come in and say, we're gonna drill here whether you like it or not, or we're gonna operate here whether you like it or not. They have to agree with the process, they have to go through zoning, um, and, and so, the, the folks that are most affected, the people that live here in Longmont, that elect you all in order to represent them as far as making those types of decisions, it's, it's inherently a local decision. Even with aggregate mining, hard rock mining, there's still local control over that. Um, and oil and gas is the only thing where there's not. And so, this has been an issue that, that I know, Matt, you probably ran your first bill on this in twenty eleven or something. I ran a bill in twenty sixteen, of course, to protect that, we're both on, and we continue to push this issue. And, um, and frankly, I think that, at least through my experience in twenty sixteen, localities, um, many are on board. Whether or not they come out publicly and say that is a different matter. And, uh, it also, I think, depends on where you're at. For example, your perspective in Waukegan might be a little different than our perspective here, but, um, but that's really the main concept, treat it like everything else.
Do you have a theory, um, for regulating horizontal drilling at all? I mean, it's, it's so unprecedented in its capability. I mean, you know, it's forced pooling, it's worse than that, it's, what can you say about it?
Well, forced pooling, I mean, that's a whole topic in and of itself, so happy to go into that, because, um, that is, again, when we're talking about the oil and gas industry being treated differently, this is the same kind of situation where there's really no private, uh, industry, other than the utilities, who are very heavily regulated, um, that can really exercise this kind of eminent domain over property. Oil and gas gets to do that, and they do it quite often. I mean, we go to the C O G C C, and on the docket, there's dozens of forced pooling applications that are in front of the C O G C C every time. And not only does it happen very often, but also the threat of it happening means that mineral rights owners are at a complete disadvantage. Again, they can't say no. And also, say, if you, you have a municipality or a county that has bought open space with taxpayer dollars and also mineral rights underneath those, that open space, they can't say no, because they can be forced pooled, they can be forced to lease or sell those minerals. So, that's another issue that we've been working on as well, obviously to no success as far as passing a bill at this point. But, um, I guess what I would say is, is there's an important role for the state. I think the state should be in the position of setting, um, minimum standards, and if the locality wants to go with, with those minimum standards, then, then it can do that. If the locality wants to go above, beyond those, it can do that. If the locality wants to deny a permit because it can't with any other type of land use, then it can do that. I mean, that should be, that should be how it should work, in my humble opinion. Um, but, and we have big disagreement about that.
Not, not from us.
And they bring up property, their property, which is really other people's property that they're either forced to sell or under threat to sell, do sell. So, that might be one of the comments you bring up when you come down to testify, that not only, like Mike said, can you put this stuff in the neighborhood, you can make people sell their property rights, or threaten them, and so they do sell their property rights.
What's the, what's the, uh, I assume there's a percentage that they have to control before they can force pool?
One owner. So theoretically, this doesn't happen very often, so I'll just say that. I mean, they try to go out there more than this, but under the law, they can have one owner that owns one percent of the mineral rights, and they can force pool the other ninety-nine. But typically, it doesn't work that way. Typically, they get a third, maybe forty percent, and, uh, at least that's my understanding of the process. And then they go out and they say, and then they start doing the forced pooling, so.
And I assume the section can move, so if it's a one percent here, they can move the box down this way?
Well, it has to be within the spacing that they, that they apply for, so.
Right, they, they apply for the spacing to make sure that they...
Yeah, yeah.
There's three hundred to five hundred spaced, uh, forced pooling orders down here, and C O G C has no idea how many people they could have done. And so, they, you know, the company does that, they might know. But if you're in a place like a river or a parish that's got forced pooled, it's probably a thousand people on that border, they're going that way into the house. Essentially, most of these go north, south, but they weren't up there drilling for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, these dozens of applications are before the commission. It's just basically like the matter of this, stamp approved, the matter of this, stamp approved, and it just, it just goes like the assembly line. They approve it.
They, they would metric how fast they issued permit.
Yeah. And, and it's also, I think Matt mentioned, as you all know this, it's not just the action of forced pooling that matters, but it's also the fact that they can go to the broker and say, well, we wanna lease your minerals, and if you have second thoughts about it, we can force you to do it anyway. So, they have that leverage. So, even if you have forty percent of the people on board before you actually really force pool, the leverage that the industry has is incredible. They can't say no. And it's just inherently unfair. The bill that, that we did last year, Matt and I did, would have put a threshold, or the initial form was it had a threshold, that you had to have fifty-one percent of the owners that wanted to actually lease minerals before you could force pool the rest, and that faced heavy resistance. Um, and so, we ended up...
But that fits in the industry?
From the industry. And, um, we had to pull it out and do an amendment in order to keep it going through the process. Um, but the, the bill at the end, when Matt saw it in the Senate, was about, uh, an extra month of notice and doing it in plain English. And the industry still opposed it, and the bill still died.
I saw my parents forced pooling, my dad walked up to me, he goes, can you really do this? And my dad is, he had a PhD, right? Well, I'm a bachelor's degree, and I looked at this, and it didn't make sense. I didn't tell them how much time they had, and they're like...
Right, so we hear also...
And they have rules, I told them, but the C O G C, see where they're supposed to do that, they don't. Didn't know, unfortunately.
And we've heard several instances where, right now, it's a thirty-day period, and people get this notice, uh, say around, I don't know, December the tenth, and, or December the fifteenth, and they're supposed to figure, they're supposed to be able to figure it out, first of all, and it's not in plain English, and/or consult an attorney, hire an attorney, and go through this whole process in that amount of time, and...
Can't stop it anyway, it sounds like, though.
Well, no. I mean, I think there's been attorneys that have been able to kind of jump in and help negotiate better, but that's about it, under protocol.
Because if you have an attorney like that, and I talked to somebody in, uh, court that did this, they, you have an attorney that, right? Because if you don't, you become a working interest at the level, you're a partner. And after they pay for it twice, however, then you start getting royalty at a certain rate, which will be smaller than the other, plus you're a working interest partner, basically, at this company. And if you do your own, it's just a lease. Theoretically, you're liable for any kind of mishap on that one. And so, in case my parents, my mom hated, if this thing was up class between the house, then they had to do that on top of it. And you become a partner, because I insulted your name. And they didn't sell, and my mom was talking about it, something about a figure. I'm like an eighty-five-year-old about that one, though.
Well, we wanna be respectful of, of our legislators' time. The, uh, we've got some members of the public here, including members of the press, so if you guys have questions, uh, be thinking about it. Any member of the public?
Yes.
John Frye, you have, you have a question? Scott Flanders, no?
You've never asked before.
I know that.
First time for everything.
First time for everything. Usually, you're just sitting there looking comfy, you did, as tonight. Any other, yes?
Yes, I have a question. So, I, yesterday, I was at the city council meeting, folks where I was sitting, talking to... Yes, I have. So I, yesterday, I was at the city council meeting and folks were over there sitting, talking about this bill. They mentioned that there's no way it's going to pass, but the fact that it fails will tell the people something. And I'm curious as to what that, I mean, what, I'm all for it. I wish I knew what I can do to get over that. And there's a question. What, what have we learned by faith?
It's enough, it's safe. And so chances are very small. But nothing in the legislature happens really quick unless there's a disaster, a flood, things happen quick. Legislature is a very incremental place and you just got to pan, especially if you're taking on a big special interest like this. You got to keep going until the public will gets bigger than the interest. And that's what this is part of. It's an easy thing to say, why do these people have special privileges when these states can explode and enable it? And make that point, this is a force pool, and that's what we got to do. It's like a people movement versus the special interests of by ads. They never see a real...
What kind of feedback do you get when you present these arguments? Like last year, I was listening, last year during 2016, it was almost like you hadn't said anything.
The other side?
What do you need to do to shake them loose?
Well, fortunately, I said it in 40 years. And what happens is, you better play the rationale for that if you want to get your vote back for your life. And that happened numerous times where somebody would make an argument and we would react quickly and use it to advantage. So they've been talking. And when I was in the majority, others would be like, we had a reason and we planned it. We didn't ask a ton of questions or anything, but we could explain it all, really, no way we did.
Yeah, I think there's value in bringing bills, even if they don't pass, for a lot of different reasons. But I'll just go back to force pooling. I mean, before we ran the bill last year, nobody was ever talking about force pooling. And still, there's a lot of people, I mean, you're not going to go up down Main Street and attack people about force pooling. But I mean, there's plenty of people at the Capitol that know what it is now and have no idea what it was before. And that's the first step into changing it. I mean, it's, you have to just keep at it. And sometimes the political stars align, but you can't take advantage of that alignment unless you've done the groundwork to make it happen. And especially with something like oil and gas, it is a policy area that has a lot of moving parts. It's complicated, there's issues, and you can't just come down one day and the stars align to change and just say, let's just do this off the top of my head. I mean, you have to work through those things. And when you are putting it through the legislature, even if it fails, you're subjecting it to rigor and scrutiny. And so, and the industry never fails in trying to find some weak spot in your bill. So they'll come in and they'll bring all their lawyers and they'll find all the weak spots. And my response has been, thank you very much and we'll make the bill better next time. And we'll just keep at it. And perhaps next year, we'll see the stars will align so that things can happen. But we wouldn't be able to take advantage of that if we didn't have all of the background that we have. And plus, the other thing is, we're legislators and our job in many regards is to give a voice to our constituents. And our constituents are telling us, we care about this issue. We want localities to be able to say no. And so we're giving a voice to that and making sure that we're doing our job. So even if it fails, I don't feel bad about coming up rather to pass. But even if it fails, I'm going to think we've done our job the best that we can.
By the way, we call it corporate intent domain. We're trying to brand it to what it is. With Protect Act this year, I ran a local control bill in 12 after the ride around, let me get me started on all this stuff. And I think it was 12 hours about that. And then we did one in 16, so it hadn't been that long. But after Firestone, I've got to tell them, what's going on now? She's not okay. Take a ride through the area in a rough, I decided I did that with my friend Pat Walker, who I connected. They're under assault. And they need somebody to stick up for them.
I think, I think what the legislation does too is it educates everyone about what's going on. Because unless you're paying attention, the public doesn't know. But when these bills come forward and testimony is given and the press comes in and covers it, all of a sudden, you know, at some point, it will reach, you know, that critical mass and something will happen. But you have to, it takes a lot of stuff to make that happen. So it's worthwhile, even though you know it's going to die, because it educates somebody on what happened.
Bring it back again and again and again and again. And the bills get better each time because you know what those arguments are. And you meet, and you count on the press to publicize them. I mean, we have a town of 95,000 people and we have two citizens here. But if we're two citizens, you have friends and neighbors. All of our staff are very educated on this and they talk to their friends and neighbors and other members of society. The press publicizes this stuff and eventually you do get to some kind of critical mass because this is, it's, many of these things are just, they're just wrong. They're unconstitutional. It is not, we are a nation that is supposed to be geared for the citizens. No, just not for corporations, for the citizens. Corporations are made up of citizens, but the priority is citizens and that is not what's going on right now. And eventually, I believe that the right will... You just have to keep trying. And I really value all the things that you guys are doing because from the opioid crisis to the health transparency. I just recently got a little operation, anyway. And I had to ask them, I said, that was a year ago, I said, is insurance going to pay for this? And they said, oh, well, we don't know. We can check. We'd love to find out. But they wouldn't put it in writing. And then, as you know, it's the $1,000 box of Kleenex or whatever. You know, when I gave birth, I heard about it for two years after they were trying to get me to pay for things. You know, my son has toilet trained now, so it's a little late to be trying to get money out of it. I am not even in the state. So I am not paying another dime for the Kleenex that I didn't even use. But it is, it's a huge problem for consumers, particularly people who don't have a lot of money, to try and get these things from opioids to the force pooling. All these things are really matters of citizens and that's, that's what all of us here are trying to do, is protect from the judge who's trying to get knuckleheads who make mistakes to, to, you know, be fairly treated but also have justice. That's what we want. That's what all of us want in this country. Whatever our viewpoints are politically, we all do justice. And I'm thankful that you guys do that on a statewide basis because we have to work together. We can't change any of that oil and gas stuff except on a statewide basis. We tried. We have tried. We have tried.
That's the thing, you've got to keep trying.
Yes, keep trying.
You look at it over the last few years, everywhere like the oil and gas conservation commissioner's does, come from either, most recently, Zash, or Bill, as we started growing. The setback used to be 250 feet, basically a drilling rig, and how far we've passed. And even though it's got Swiss cheese, oil and gas commissioner vehicles, it's now 500,000 because we started making economy, I'm saying. The setback for marijuana business for the property, but not in something that looks like. And you go through all the things and they brag about, they were pushing to do that they were wanting to give to the most.
And there's something else that I think should be said about these bills that are going to die, which is that the public does exercise its right to speak freely. And what that means is that the one-person majority with its own this Home Rule Bill is going to have to sit through four hours, with any luck at all, of testimony beginning with the city of Longmont in opposition to what they're about to do.
We can hope it's... We're going to be there all day.
Right.
Yeah, be there midnight.
You guys wanted to be in the list of the...
No, no, no.
I did that once.
Yes, painful. But you have to believe, if you believe in democracy, that there is some effect to that.
I'm glad that eventually...
I know, we're taking it in straight fights, keeping it, but...
Well, we're coming up on two hours and it's been a great conversation. We want to thank our legislators for coming down and doing this every year. You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate your efforts.
Thanks for your service.
Yeah, thank you very much. And if there's anything you need, you know, we're here to help. And some of us will see you on Monday and you're always welcome. And so with that, if there's anything else from staff, right? Eugene, no? You don't want to correct them on their legal authority?
We tried.
You tried?
Let the industry do that.
Great, you're going to be a juror, but if you want to stick around and talk, I guess you guys can do that in the...